Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here, welcome. We'll start with the roll call. Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Protim Harvey?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, if you all will stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will start this evening with ceremonies and presentations and with Sally with four A presentation of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Award.
Thank you, Mayor Levy, council members. It's my honor this evening to introduce the Business Beautification Award and ask first of all for Jan Wilson to come join me at the podium. She is currently the chairperson of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee and she will actually do the presentation, but I thought it might be helpful for you to have a little bit of history of this award since it is the first one for 2015. The city was acknowledged as a Keep America Beautiful certified organization in 2004, so about 11 years ago. And one of the first things that that new committee did was to try to honor businesses and organizations that really went above and beyond the call of duty to beautify their businesses and properties. And every year there were maybe about four or five awardees and I still see some of these plaques hanging in businesses' offices, so they're quite proud of it. And it is in order to try to stimulate and recognize that we really do appreciate the work and the pride that they take in their properties. So this evening, Jan is going to present the first one from 2015.
This award is being given to Tweets Fine Furnishings for your beautiful retail building and grounds that welcome residents and visitors to our community and your dedication to assist Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. And this doesn't even begin to cover the things that you do for our city. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. I am honored to receive this award. In a city as beautiful as this one, to receive a beautification award, I think says a lot. So again, I'm honored to receive it and thank you very much. I have and will continue to invest what I can in beautification projects around our community because in my opinion, it will always be a good investment. More than any other single reason, I think people are drawn to this area because of the area itself. The rugged, beautiful mountain environment that we are nestled within has drawn many here and any investment in our community to reflect that beauty is a good investment. So, thank you again and we'll keep it up.
Tanner, thanks very much. I'm gonna piggyback a little bit to what Jan could have said about Tanner. Not only has he won this award and well deserved, but such an active member of our community, such a great leader, not only at the Chamber, DDA, Moose is Loose, everything you do for our community, we really appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to Suzanne, appointment to the Community Investment Funding Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we are appointing to the Community Investment Funding Committee. We have three, currently three vacant positions. Two of the positions are for citizen representatives and one position is for someone that's from an organization that receives the funds. We posted it, we've advertised it, we've done everything that council requests us to do and we've had our three incumbents are the three applications that we received. Tonight with us, we have John DeVoe and Sue Griswold here. Darwin Nakarado, excuse me, is unable to be here tonight. And I am just asking that council approve the appointments of John DeVoe and Sue Griswold and Darwin and I will give them the oath of office and give Darwin the oath of office at another time.
Sounds good to me, council. Do you want to talk to those that are here or should we just accept them?
I suggest we accept them. And I'm very pleased that Sue and John and Darwin have decided they want to continue with the Community Investment Fund Committee.
I'll second that suggestion.
And I think we're all in favor. So, thank you, John, and thank you, Sue. Thank you, John Schaefer, for helping lead that. And you guys do great, great work. It's phenomenal what we give back to the community and we really appreciate your giving and your time. So, thank you very much.
Can we move this?
I guess we should.
I move to accept the three candidates for the Community Investment Funding Committee.
Second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And thanks again.
Would John and Sue join me at the podium? Please write your name and repeat after me. I state my name.
I join the call.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado?
And of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances?
Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park?
Of the City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And that I will faithfully perform?
The duties of the Community Investment Fund Committee?
The duties of the Community Investment Fund Committee.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Thank you. I have oaths. If you just want to sign them, here's Sue. There's And you get to keep the pretty one. Welcome. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to four C and Mr. Butterby.
Thank you, Mayor. Most folks in the community are well aware that we have a police department that sometimes issues citations, but a lot of people don't know that we actually have a municipal court system where if folks want to appeal those decisions or try to plead those decisions, they could come before municipal court. We have a court judge, a presiding judge, and we've had a alternate judge for many, many years. Our alternate judge recently resigned due to some caseloads in his private practice. And so, we went through the process of advertising. We received six applications to backfill for the deputy judge position. And prior to this meeting, council met in an open session to interview three of those candidates. And the council has given me guidance to make an offer of employment as the deputy municipal court judge to one or more of those individuals. We actually have the opportunity to present more than one. We're allowed to do that by charter. So, they've made that guidance to me and I will follow through on that tomorrow. We will formally appoint that individual or those two individuals or those three individuals at our next council meeting. Part of the process tonight also, though, is to ensure that we acknowledge and appoint the presiding judge, John Bruce, who has actually been our court judge for a lot of years. So, this evening, council, I would be asking you to formally appoint Judge John Bruce as the presiding judge of the Woodland Park Municipal Court. And I will follow through with the backup judges tomorrow.
So, I move?
Second. Second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks. And I want to thank David to start with, but certainly John Bruce, Carla Collins, and our whole council. We had a great process in determining who's going to be the alternative, the deputy judge, and great process. We came up with two great names and so, we appreciate everybody's help in that process. Ken?
Well, I was just gonna say, it's not too often we get to have Judge Bruce here. And I, and he has worked here in that position for many, many, many years. And we certainly at the very least owe him a round of applause for all his dedication and work at the city. Thank you, John.
And thank you, Mr. Matthews, for your career. Very much. It's been a very enjoyable time.
That's great. Thank you very much. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, on the consent calendar, we have item, the minutes of February 19, and then we have approval of the Community Development Block Grants for the Waterline Loop at the Pikes Peak Regional Hospital.
Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of both items on the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Are we gonna speak right?
Always ready.
Always ready. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, unfinished business? We have none. We move on to ordinances on initial posting. And we'll start with eight A, consider ordinance number 1228. And Mr. Wiley?
Thank you. Ordinance 1228 is on initial posting. However, I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail on initial posting for you guys. There was a lot of changes done to Title 13 of the Utilities Code, so I'll run through those. And as you're aware, we do run this through the Utilities Advisory Committee. And we actually have four members here tonight. Mr. Levy, Mr. Schaefer, and both of our alternates, JR and Renee are also in the audience. So, it's kinda nice for all the support. Thank you. What is ordinance 1228? It's an ordinance establishing tap fees for a mixed-use building. A mixed-use building is defined as a combination of both residential and non-residential in one building. And currently, we have, we don't have a way of establishing tap fees for that type of use. We have ways for establishing a residential tap and a non-residential tap. So, we, when I say we, the Utilities Department and UAC looked into that. Why did we look into this? The city's comprehensive plan has a water action item 2.1.1, and I'm just gonna recite that for you real quick. It calls for city staff and elected officials to prioritize land use slash housing needs, which, when coupled with additional water available, could be expanded to produce maximum benefit for the community. And recognizes that land uses slash housing needs currently in highest priority include affordable housing and higher density housing in and adjacent to central business districts. And this is how, this is what we looked at when we looked at the mixed-use buildings. So, as I said earlier, the Utilities Department and the Utility Advisory Committee looked into mixed-use buildings. They looked, we looked at a couple of different factors. We looked at methods of establishing these fees. We also looked at how we stay compatible with the city's water supply. How do we make this equitable, how do we make this method equitable for both new and existing customers? Because there will be situations to where existing commercial or non-residential customers would like to switch to a mixed-use building. And the physical tap fee connection and how that would be implemented. In the end, we decided, after, it was about, we had two meetings on this. In the end, we decided to use our current tap fee structures and simply combine those. So, when I, when I say combine, it's, it's taking the residential side of the, of the building and the non-residential and figuring out the tap size or what is required for both those and combining them together, creating a sum for a total tap fee. This way, we can stay compatible with the city's water supply. As you are aware, the Water Tap Management Plan tracks all taps. And we refer to taps as a dwelling unit, so we can track these to stay compatible with our water supply and also the Water Tap Management Plan reconciliation. So, we can balance financially with the water we have available in the bank. Also, this, this combined approach just seemed to be, from everyone's perspective, everyone, the Utilities Advisory Committee and the UAC, that just the best way to establish a mixed-use building. Basically, I recommend approval of ordinance 1228 on initial posting and set the public hearing for March 19, 2015. May I answer any questions?
Sure. Questions, council?
Is there a current use for you or that would use this? A current need in the market here in Woodland Park for this?
We, they're currently, you, city council approved a CUP for Gold Hill in regards to this. That ZDP has not come forward yet.
And then also, within the DDA, that we're having discussions with that developer where there would be that opportunity as well, but that hasn't been presented to the staff yet.
Okay.
You know, I think the question is, is an incident driving policy? It is not. It's driving the process to create that policy.
Most of the questions will be it next time. This is just first reading. But talking about the property in the DDA, is, if you have, I understand it would probably be possible to merge all of this, is if you've got one landlord that is supplying water without having individual meters for every, every business. But if you have a place where you have individual meters instead, like a condominium where somebody buys that unit as opposed renting an apartment, have you taken into account that situation where you would have individual meter?
Yes, we have. Just to elaborate a little bit, a mixed-use building with residential and non-residential, if it is all, it's all one ownership, it's basically not individually metered because it's all one ownership. However, you do meter each use. So, there will be a meter for the non-residential and a meter for the residential.
Okay. Good.
Again, I don't want to get into too much detail. Give this everyone a chance to read it, but how will those mixed-use taps count against the ceiling of taps for residential or commercial?
We do not track resident, or commercial taps. The residential portion are, just as we do now, if it were a single ownership, multiple units, it's one tap per unit. Or multifamily, it's still one tap per unit. For example, Trail Ridge, we allocated 168 taps because there were 168 units. So, all of it gets accounted for.
Okay.
But how many meters do we actually have at Trail Ridge or will we have?
We have one per building.
One per building. Okay. Any other questions on initial posting? If not, then last?
Oh, can I make one last comment?
Please.
Also, on the Dyson front of you, there were some changes made to page eight that we wanted to make you aware of.
Thank you. Okay, call for motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 1233?
1228.
1228, sorry about that, on initial posting.
Sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Suzanne?
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Kip, you want to continue with considering ordinance number 1233?
Sure can. Ordinance 1233 authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract to purchase 2.3 shares of Twin Lakes Reservoir and Colorado Canal Company, excuse me. These 2.3 shares are fully consumable water that is generated up in Independence Pass or around Twin Lakes. These shares of water, we use to replace the consumed portion of our local water, therefore making it legal for us to use our local water. These shares ensure the security for the city in dry years. They do not expand what we can serve because we can only bring over so, so much water in a year. But they, we experienced very low production on our shares in 2012. Therefore, we saw a need to, to purchase these shares to ensure that security. They provide water and storage as well.
Could you refresh our memory on the cost?
It is 39,500 per share. Also, in the ordinance, I'd like to point your attention to section one. In there, we, we explain the price per share. However, because of the time of the year and there is a $21 assessment fee per share, that $21 assessment fee per share is added for a total of $90,898.30. I recommend approval of ordinance 1233 on initial posting and set the public hearing for March 19, 2015. I can answer any questions you may have.
Council, we have any questions?
How many shares do we currently?
In Twin Lakes, we have right around 188.
What's a town like Colorado Springs have?
In the tens of thousands.
And just one last question, or for me at least. 39,000 or so for a share, how much have we paid and is this a normal amount? Is it high? Is it low? How does it fit into what we usually do?
We were outbid in 2012. And at that point, we were offering $27,000 per share. We were outbid at $36,000 per share. Since then, they've continued to go up. And I have knowledge of anywhere from 39,000 to 44,000.
Kip, would this increase our utility costs per user?
For just these shares?
Well, would I see an increase in my bill?
For just purchasing these shares? No.
Okay. Thank you.
We will go through the Water Tap Management Reconciliation?
Okay.
Next month. And I can, it kinda lays all that out for you is when you would see those adjustments.
Thank you.
Your, your bill will go up April 1st due to the annual adjustment of the Consumer Price Index.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
Any other questions, council? If not, call for motion.
Move to approve ordinance 1233 initial posting and set the public hearing for March 19.
Second. Any other questions? Thoughts? Suzanne?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Kip. Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on to HC and our city attorney, Erin Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, ordinance 1234. Well, let me start with telling you, giving you some background. Woodland, the Woodland Park Municipal Code currently prohibits minors from possessing tobacco products. But the code definition of tobacco products does not encompass e-cigarettes and related devices, which are included in the state law definition of tobacco and tobacco products. Recently, the city's police department and Martha Hubbard, Director of Teller County Public Health, have recommended that the city amend its definition of tobacco to track the state law's definition. Ordinance 1234 does update the municipal code by incorporating the state law definition of tobacco. And it also allows violations related to e-cigarettes and, and related devices to be handled in the city's municipal court rather than through the state court system. I will also add that by updating this definition, the violations in the code that pertain to the sale of tobacco products to minors are covered. So, the expanded definition of tobacco applies to those sales as well. My recommendation is to move to approve ordinance 1234 on initial posting and set the public hearing for March 19, 2015. And I can answer any questions council may have.
Questions?
Got a question. If it is mandated by the state, that doesn't mean that we necessarily have to abide by that? Is that correct?
In this case, that's true. So, we have the local control and can have the definition that we would like to have. But in this, in this ordinance, we would be recommending we be consistent with state law.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. So, we got kids running around with e-cigarettes and there's nothing we can do about it right now. Is that correct?
They can be cited under the state law and be, be dealt with in the district court, county court.
So, this is more just administrative?
It is in some ways because it allows our municipal court to handle these minor violations.
So, give more work to Judge Bruce. He's gone.
Any other questions?
The chief may want to also add to?
One of the biggest things that using our municipal court allows us to do is to have small juvenile offenses handled locally. The kids aren't going to Cripple Creek. The juvenile court is handled by the district court by law in Colorado. Sometimes it's delegated to one of the other judges. But the district court is the court that tries murders, major crimes, that tries major lawsuits. And then they have to fit this stuff in, which is sometimes difficult. In our court, we have the ability to handle it quickly and effectively. The witnesses and defendants are in The witnesses and defendants are in Woodland Park, the court's in Woodland Park, our court runs on schedule. The district court's, because of the volume and the number of cases they have, have multiple postponements and reschedulings, just because of the nature of the system. So it's much more effective use of everybody's time as well as it allows us to set penalties ourselves, and the kids can go into teen court on stuff like this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Motion to consider ordinance 1234.
Second. Suzanne?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to number 8D and consider ordinance number 1235, and we have Wally Dingwell. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Levy, counsel. In February of 2012, counsel at the time approved ordinance 1156, series 2012. The purpose of that ordinance was to allow the wastewater enterprise to loan 300,000, the sum of $300,000 to the water enterprise. The purpose of allowing that loan was so that the water enterprise would comply with, pardon me, requirements of a loan agreement between the water enterprise and the Colorado Water Resource and Power Development Authority. And that requirement was that the water enterprise would have in reserves an amount greater than three months of operating and maintenance expense. Now, since then, the water fund has done well. Currently, they are running between 12 and 13 months of operating and maintenance expenses, so it seems to be an appropriate time to repay that loan. And this is really just a book entry, since we would really be paying ourselves if we paid the water fund, paid the wastewater fund. So it's really just a bookkeeping entry. So therefore, I'm recommending the approval of ordinance 1235, repaying the loan on initial posting, and set the public hearing for March 19th. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, counsel?
We do this every year? Because if it's 2012, so we do this payment every year?
No, no. The loan was set up with 1% interest payable annually, so $3,000 interest payment every year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call for motion?
I'd move approval ordinance 1235 as presented with the public hearing for March 19th.
Second. Suzanne?
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, Wally. Okay, we'll move on to number nine, and we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to new business and turn it over to Councilman Schaefer.
Well, on our last meeting, I asked the council for, to support a resolution in support of Senate Bill 15-177. Council agreed to do that, and so Suzanne has prepared that resolution, and I would like that we have a vote on that.
Any questions?
Yes, procedurally, what does a resolution do from this point? Does it go to Colorado Municipal League? Does it go straight to a state representative? What happens with this type of resolution from a municipality?
Colorado Municipal League has requested that any municipalities passing this particular resolution forwarded on to them, so we will do that.
Okay.
Do we know any other municipalities that have done this?
I don't know, but Councilmember Schaefer might.
I do not.
I know that the issue was briefed at the last policy committee meeting for the Colorado Municipal League. At that point, they had not established their position, but they were soliciting input at that point, so I imagine there will be other cities that do so.
And actually, our chamber president is in the audience, and she's aware of some of the different municipalities that have?
Not municipalities, chambers, I'm aware of.
Like I said, she's aware of chambers that have, and so Debbie, can you share those with us, please?
The Colorado Association of Commerce and Industry, which is the overall state chamber, has supported this, as well as the Denver Metro, the Denver South. The Woodland Park Chamber also sent letters to our state rep and state senator as well. Grand Junction, Rifle, Fruta, Pagosa Springs, Durango. I'm not sure about Colorado Springs at this point. I believe they are on there, but those are the ones I'm aware of right now.
Thank you. John, if this passes in the Senate, how is it going to pertain to us? How is it going to benefit us?
Well, what the bill actually has done is mandates that there are requirements and agreements for fundamentally homeowners associations that include the words mediation and arbitration, and those were not required in previous documents, and so whenever there was a question about construction defects, and it became serious, then the only course of action was to sue and litigate. And this was taking a significant long time to resolve and also very expensive, and so this is an attempt then to provide another approach to resolve these defect questions without having to litigate.
Thanks.
Those are the barriers.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll call for motion. John?
Yeah, move to approve resolution number 791 in support of Senate Bill 15-177.
Second.
Suzanne?
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, we'll move forward, public comment. I've got one person on my list, we'll start with Steve Jeroslow. Welcome.
Thank you.
State your name and address with a record, if you will.
Steve Jeroslow, 610 Sun Valley Drive here in Woodland Park. As some of you may know, I'm involved in both the Woodland Aquatic Project and the Main Street Initiative Board, and both organizations, with the cooperation of the city, the chamber, and other organizations, are aggressively pursuing a revitalization of our main street, restoration of our historical buildings, and development of more retail opportunities, particularly in the Woodland Station area. And it's clear to me at least that with a little bit of luck and a decent economy, there'll be a significant build-out of Woodland Station within the next five to seven to eight to 10 years perhaps, and that's a good thing, in my opinion, for both the local residents and tourists, which we hope will do more than just drive through our great town, but in fact, stop, dine, wine, and enjoy the many amenities that we have here. And what I think that will translate into in five or eight or so years is increased traffic crossing Highway 24, going from what I called Old Woodland Park, the historic part of Woodland Park, which is typically viewed as the northern portion, north of Highway 24, and Woodland Station, which I hope and believe will become an additional focal point for a great deal of activity, both by locals and by tourists. So I believe we're going to have a substantial increase in traffic across Highway 24 in the years ahead. And I believe if we are not already doing this, I think we need to start planning for a feasible way, a safe way, to get fairly heavy pedestrian traffic from more often than not, the northern side of Highway 24 to the southern side, from old historic Woodland Park to one of the new centers of activity for Woodland Park at Woodland Station. The way I see it, and I am not an urban planner by any means, is there are only three ways you can do it, I believe. One is for people to walk across, which would require a light, and I think David Butter and staff are already initiating some activity on that possibility. A second would be a pedestrian bridge, which I personally favor, but after speaking with Sally Riley, she tells me that pedestrian bridges don't tend to work real well in urban and suburban environments. And the third opportunity would be a tunnel underneath Highway 24, which I suspect would be fairly expensive. But whatever means is used, I strongly recommend that if the city has not already started such planning, that we do so now, not next year or the year after that, but now, because with the possible exception of a stoplight, my understanding is from the time we initiate such action to the time you actually get something built with all the approvals at the local, county, state, and national levels, it could be many, many years, five, six, seven, eight years, more or less about the same time that I suspect Woodland Station will be built out. So I would hope that at future meetings that David and his staff will, if they have not already, will actively be pursuing one of those options or anything else that the city has come up with to make that pedestrian crossing safe for the volume of people I hope we get to have here in the years ahead. That's my comment.
Thank you very much. Any comment, Dave?
If I may, thanks, Steve, for pointing out that issue. Currently, and the issue in my mind focuses really around Center Street and Highway 24 because we have a signalized crossing at Fairview and then at West, two blocks either side of Center. Currently, there's a flashing yellow light there at Center that is pedestrian-activated. Granted, it's not the safest maneuver. Prior to that, we had orange flags that we waved to get across the street. We actually were ahead of CDOT's warrant process for installing that flashing signal light that is there. It wasn't warranted under their scheme. We do know that with the build-out of Woodland Station, there will be significantly more traffic at that intersection, both pedestrian and vehicular. As part of the Woodland Station and the Aquatic Center process, we'll be conducting a traffic study that will more than likely indicate that we need a signalized intersection there, but that, as you say, will take some time. I don't think it will take the full five to eight years, but it will take some time. As an interim measure, Bill Allspock has been working very closely with CDOT, and I'll let him describe what's going to happen there within the next eight to 10 months or so.
Thank you, David. Yeah, our partners at CDOT have recognized our challenges at that intersection, and that's why we entered into discussions with them a couple of years ago about Woodland Station, about getting their conceptual approval for a signal there, because it doesn't meet the typical signal spacing requirements. But they've agreed in concept that the signal will ultimately be required there. In the interim, they are in the process of procuring and will install in this year sometime a signal called an improved HAWK signal, which is an overhead pedestrian-actuated flashing sequence of lights that will have traffic stop at that intersection at Center and 24. So it's a better signal than what's there. Today, the rectangular flashing beacons that are there will be removed by CDOT and put in another location somewhere within the region that they're needed, and then this HAWK signal. Now, the HAWK signal, you might want to just do an internet search on it. Wikipedia has a pretty nice little animation of how the thing works, how the signals cycle, and I think it'll be a great interim measure and improvement at that intersection for pedestrian access across there.
Bill, would you physically describe the poles, the mast, the lights, the colors, that thing? Because that's different than what we have now.
Well, it is, and I'd say it goes over the street, it goes, you know, it's a cantilever signal light, and I'm trying to remember exactly how the sequence works, but it starts with flashing yellow lights, and then I think it flashes red and then goes to a steady red, and then cycles out of that. So there's poles on the side and a pole over the street. Now, that's based on the generic HAWK signal. I believe that's what they're working on. I haven't seen their procurement documents yet because they're working on it, we were in discussions about it just this week, but I haven't seen their final design, but I suspect it'll be very much like that.
So instead of having flashing yellow on the sides, we'll have flashing yellow and then red that's over the road. I think it will be a significant improvement over what's there now, but it's not quite yet a signalized intersection, so it's a good intermediate step. But we are moving forward. We know we're going to have to do the traffic study that gets submitted to CDOT, and then they will make the recommendation on the signalized intersection component of that.
David, I've got two questions. One, do you anticipate that will help slow the traffic? The HAWK, A and B, when do we suspect that the HAWK's going to be initiated?
Second question first. I think I remember seeing October, November. It wasn't in the summer, it was unfortunately after the summer. So that's the second question. The first question, do I think it will have an impact on the speed? During the highest, perhaps the highest period of usage by pedestrians, it might, because it will cause people to slow down when there's crossing, but on a normal day when no one is crossing the road, no, I don't expect it to, because it's not, it's not a signal light. It's just for pedestrian crossings.
So a pedestrian will push a button and then be allowed to cross the road?
Correct.
Any other questions, John?
Do you have volunteers from city staff then that are going to demonstrate the efficacy of the new light system?
Absolutely.
We cross there now all the time.
Now that we're in a job killer mood, if this doesn't work, then we can perhaps use the CDOT method for the flood control, closing a road, and they got those barriers that go down that we just recently installed. Just kidding. A question, if all else fails and we do put a traffic light, do we have to consider pushing out the other two traffic lights? No. We don't. Because my understanding, it was like a distance issue, that's why there's no traffic light there.
It is, it's a distance issue, and that's why there's not one there now. But we, like I say, we entered into discussions with them several years ago about that, and have gotten them to agree in concept that the closeness of those signals will be acceptable, and they understand the special issues and conditions that we have there.
Okay, good.
It'll just make it a little more frustrating to get through town. We will all go around.
Anything else?
Well, yeah, just out of curiosity, the tunnel down at Safeway, was that, has that been there historically? I understand that that was something that was here during the rodeo days, but did CDOT then pay for that to be reinforced and used as it is today?
It's a great story, so it's a great question, which allows me to tell this great story. When Paradise Lodge was established well before 1938, the rodeo grounds were across what is now Highway 24, and there was a road there in that timeframe. Of course, the railroad was there. So they built a bridge or a culvert, a box culvert, that was big enough to carry the drainage, because there is a drainage area that comes down through there, but they intentionally built the box culvert large enough so that horses and buggies could go from Paradise Lodge underneath the road and the railroad to get to the rodeo arena, which is now the deli section of the Safeway. So when they expanded the highway in 1975, they just expanded that size. It's a 10 by 12 box culvert, way oversized for the drainage. What we did, probably 12 years ago, was we, after Safeway was built, realizing the only pedestrian crossing was at the Safeway-Aspen-Gardenway intersection, and that's close to 17 miles wide, and it was just unsafe for pedestrians to move across there, we hired a local engineer to work in a very confined space to create that ADA-accessible route that goes underneath the highway, just as the horses and buggies did. So it's continuing that history of moving non-motorized traffic from one side of the highway to a draw on the other side of the highway.
And the follow-on to that story is we just did the same thing out on Highway 67 when we replaced the timber bridge by Lloyd Creek there with a box culvert, and that was paid for by CDOT with faster money, and we included an extra cell or box culvert that's big enough for pedestrian traffic sometime in the future.
So it's not infeasible to have a tunnel?
No.
No, it's not, but these were, this was built as a box culvert, and the road went over the top as opposed to digging down underneath. So it's a little bit of a different process, but it's not out of the question.
Thanks. Good story.
Anybody else? Okay, Steve, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate it. We will move on unless there are any more public comments. Mrs. Miller, we usually see you at this point in the evening. You're shaking your head. Okay. Then we will move on to number 12 and Mayor's Reports. I have a couple of announcements to make. First and foremost for us, we're looking for another city council member. So the deadline is, I think, noon on March 13th. I'm sure it's noon on March 13th. I know we have a couple applicants already. It's a great opportunity to represent your community, and we look forward to the process. And we spread the word. There are a lot of great leaders in our community, so please have them step forward. This is a great opportunity for all of us. Saturday, this Saturday, March 7th, the Teller Senior Center Chili Cookoff will actually happen. It was moved from last week to this week. It's from 11:30 to 1:30, and I believe it is at the Senior Center. And you can call 339-0954 to enter. Saturday, March 14th, two weeks, Winter Farmers Market, UCAS Cultural Center, nine to one. That's a fun event. And on Tuesday, March 17th, will be our next Chamber Business After Hours. It's hosted by Keller Williams. Everyone knows where that is. And from 5:30 to 7 o'clock, we've had unbelievable turnouts at Chamber After Hours the last, I don't know, all the time, but just recently, it just seems like it's been phenomenal. So thanks to everybody for their support.
Mayor, I do have one other to add to that list because I was anticipating that Ms. Miller would make this announcement, but the Chamber Annual Dinner is Friday, March 13th, and I suspect, are there still tickets available?
We have four tickets left.
Okay.
Underlined Friday, the 13th. Okay.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
Some of us have been worried about where to get the Masquerade Bask. I understand party stores have them and also Pier One has the Venetian style. Is that correct? Are we still having a Masquerade Ball?
We are having a Masquerade Ball. I don't know where it's located.
Some people worry about it more than others.
I think I'm glad you don't know, David.
Okay, Council reports?
I just wanted to let everyone know we had our initial Charter Review Committee meeting last night upstairs here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. Productive meeting. We got a good legal review from the city attorney on what our left and right parameters will be in our effort to review the charter. We'll continue to meet on the first Wednesday of each month until we complete the review, and our next meeting will be on April 1st, 6:00 PM upstairs, and those are open to the public. That's all I have.
Thanks, girl. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah. A number of folks in the community have probably been wondering what's happened since November, whatever, 4th, 5th, the last election with the aquatic project. So I think we've made enough progress that tonight we can make some, a status report for the community. I wanted Dave to go ahead and take the lead so he could share what the city has done over the last few months.
Thank you. I'd be happy to do that. Things are moving along despite there not being a lot of buzz in the community about the specifics. We needed to, well, let me paint the picture. The location is going to be in the Woodland Station area, as everyone knows, and it will be south of Saddle Club Drive, which is the east-west running road that is just south of Woodland Hardware. So the location is catty corner, if you will, from the How-To Store in a southwesterly direction. We have identified a polygon that the Aquatic Center can go in, say simply a polygon, because we've recently received initial permission or initial acknowledgement that we can reroute the headwaters of Fountain Creek without being concerned with the Army Corps of Engineers or state water quality. They both have blessed a realignment of the channel, which will allow us to have a larger building envelope in a more opportune location, a little bit closer to the road, a little bit further east. We have given, we've given that information to our architects. They are starting to move forward with some initial work. We're going to finalize the contract with them relatively soon. We're also in dialogue with the consulting engineering firm that's not only going to do the engineering for the Aquatic Center, but is going to do the engineering for the infrastructure associated with the Aquatic Center. So it'll be a turnkey operation from an engineering perspective. We're in those negotiations as well to finalize that scope of work. We've received it. Bill's looking at it. I'm looking at it, and we'll finish that work up fairly soon. Unless you have specific question, well, the funding mechanism. We have received the final draft of what's called the Official Statement of the City, which defines our strength as it relates to paying the debt service on the bonds. Staff is reviewing that. We've hired a underwriter for that process. When we finish the operating statement, we'll be able to bundle everything up and then offer those bonds onto the market. We think we're going to be very successful. We have a very high rating in Standard and Poor's and Moody's, so we think we'll get good dollars for that investment at a low interest rate and move forward with the project. What questions can I answer for you?
What's the next milestone in this process?
There's a couple. One is after BRS, the architect, presents another, what I would call a draft concept of the functions that are going to be within the Aquatic Center, we're going to present that to the community and say, here's what we think we can afford, here's what we think the communities told us they want, let's validate that. Concurrently, we'll be working on the infrastructure scope of work in that design process. Once the architects get the final word from us on what all's going to be included, they'll go full bore with the design process. That'll take many months to accomplish. Then once that is done, we'll move forward with the actual construction documents and bidding that project out. We're not exactly sure what that process will look, if it will do design, bid, build. We're pretty well convinced it'll be a contract, CMGC.
Construction Manager General Contractor.
Thank you. That process where we get a contractor on board with the engineers and the owners fairly early on so we can use each other's expertise to get the best product we can.
If I could offer one of the milestones coming up here real soon will be, we'll be in front of you with contracts to approve with the architect and the engineers. So you'll be seeing those soon.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm just curious, the infrastructure work you're talking about, how is that related to future development, the other developments we've heard about in Woodland Station? And will those future developments then have some reimbursement effect on some of that cost, or will they be paying for extension from what we're doing for the Aquatic Center up to where they're going to build in Woodland Station? I hope I stated that.
No, I understand the question. It could be a combination of both. We absolutely are making sure that when we design the infrastructure, we're taking into account all those other entities that could tie into it. In fact, we've hired Tim Seibert from NES. You may remember Tim. He represented Teller County Waste. We've hired Tim to pull together all the different entities that are playing in that sandbox, the Woodland Aquatic Center, the DDA with their Lot Two development. He's also has a relationship with the Family Entertainment Center, so that when we put the infrastructure in, we'll know where and how big things need to plug into. Whether there's reimbursement agreements, that really will depend on what our scope is for all of the work. Do we extend all the infrastructure to West Street? If that's the case, and it's an opportunity for somebody to plug in and reimburse us for that, we will absolutely take advantage of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, then to continue on with what I had to say, that was a city part, the Woodland Aquatic Project Board of Directors has also been working very, over the last couple months to drill down to more definitive some of the scope. It's concept was a concept, and now you have to worry about water temperatures and things like that. Primarily been working with USA Swimming and the folks that have the pool down at the Olympic Center to get their advice as to how the pool would operate. Would you have to have multiple water temperatures and things like that? So we're getting into kind of the technical details. But also, we were talking to Dr. Bestor, the orthopedic surgeon at the hospital, and a number of aquatherapists as opposed to just physical therapists, and there seems to be very strong demand for a physical aquatherapy pool in addition to what we have there. We're pretty sure that, we're sure that this is going to be afforded. In fact, the folks that run these things say it's a very fast payback period. So this is one of the things that David has gone back to BRS and said, hey, could you modify the concept design to incorporate this one item? So, and as David said, we'll also have similar, the board along with the city will co-chair a meeting with the community to get into like the amenities, like water fountains and slides and things like that with people that aren't concerned about, you know, the competition side or the disabled side. It would be more the leisure side. So that will be within the next month or so. Now, with regard to the other activities the board is doing is fundraising. You'll be aware, back in April 2007, no, 2011, there was a survey of the community with regard to, one of the questions was with regard to funding, and there was, there was recognized the need that we would try to raise private funding too, in addition to the city funding that would come through. And that comes through grants from foundations and donations from individuals and businesses. And so we've, we're developing that campaign right now. We have over two dozen foundations that we would approach, and we've all taken lessons on how to write grants, but Christine Fisher is donating her time to help us out, get started on that. We've already got a final draft of the language, the template, the content that would go in to these grant applications. So we're making good progress on there, but I want to make clear that the money that the citizens approved last November, 10.1 million, is sufficient to do the aquatic project. Okay? What we're talking about here is raising the additional money, like through naming rights or whatever, that would pay for these additional amenities, like a scoreboard, like the digital scoreboard on the pool wall or something like that. So anyway, or it could be landscaping, we talked about earlier with the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. I mean, those types of things would be an enhancement of the basic facility. So we're talking about amenities here, and we're proceeding along that line too.
Okay. I'd like to just focus in on semantics, and I want to be real careful that the community understands that the, Bobby used the word fundraising. We, the voters gave us permission to borrow and go into debt for 10.1 million. We're going to build a swimming pool with 10.1 million. We don't know exactly yet what construction costs are going to be. We don't know exactly what all the, everything's going to be, but we're going to build the swimming pool. We're going to build that facility with what the citizens have entrusted us to do. So your follow-on about the naming rights is absolutely spot on. So I don't call it fundraising because I don't want people to get the wrong impression that we've asked to go into debt, and now we've got to go into their pockets again if folks want to have a portion of the Aquatic Center that is in memory of a loved one, or if a governmental, not a governmental, I'm sorry, a private entity wants to donate money and to have their name on it. We want to be able to support that, and we want to give them those opportunities. But rest assured, we have the money to build the Aquatic Center. This is naming opportunities for those who would want to support that. If we, if, wouldn't it be a wonderful thing if we raised more money than what the costs were? We'll pay the debt off sooner, or we'll use that money in other ways that the community wants us to. Thank you.
Just like to say, as a council liaison for Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee, constantly amazed, as I was last Monday night, the energetic people, there were 13 people that are meeting Monday night, and the volunteers that are involved in that group and then get involved in that group beyond those 13 in that committee is just amazing to me. And there's many, many things planned for the near future, the spring, the summer, that involve many, many businesses and other people. I'll have maybe a full report later unless I can get Renee to come up and say something. I don't know, I saw Jan was here earlier, our chairperson, and she's not here now. Jan, do you want to say anything that's pertinent at this moment? I know I didn't give you any notice, but you know.
I can talk about the bear aware.
Okay, let's do that. Or I'll let you do that, I should say.
Thank you, come from Matthews. Good evening. Our bear aware program is starting on March 16th.
Excuse me, Renee, just name an address before you start.
Renee Bunting, 57, Stacy Lane. Our bear aware project is starting on March 16th, and all the children who participate this year are going to get a little wristband, and it says, Keep Colorado Bears Wild. And then we have a little pin for the kids and also a keychain. And Tim Cronin from Colorado Division of Wildlife gave us all the goodies to give to the children. So like I said, it starts on March 16th. On April 6th, we're going to have our judging at our monthly meeting, and then the mayor on April 16th will give the winners a pin. So they're going to be, the pictures will be put up at the library, and then Park State Bank has offered to put the winners in the lobby after that, so that'll be a lot of fun. Any questions? And then don't forget, we have the cleanup on May 30th, so, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Thank you very much. Anything else, Ken?
Nope.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yes, I guess I will talk about Parks and Rec. We haven't had a meeting since January 14th, so really I, the only, the only thing I have is the new guide is out, and it has an awesome promotion of our new park and our great Aquatic Center that we're going to get. That's really all I have to say.
That's great. This is awesome. Great job. John?
Councilwoman Sawyer, there's for the public in the back.
There's one.
Stack of the Parks and Rec.
Oh.
What's she saying? Thank you.
John?
Well, over the past few weeks, you've heard from Brian Flair and me talking about a new nonprofit housing organization to address what we see as an urgent need for workforce and senior affordable housing. And I'm happy to let you know that just today, we received a letter from the IRS, which now makes us officially a 501(c) theory, so we can get serious about raising some funds now. And I'm sure Brian will have more to say about that when he takes the mic.
Thank you. Anything else, John?
No.
Thanks very much. Okay, if nothing else from council, we'll move on to Ms. Smith?
I have nothing.
She said nothing. Okay, Mr. Buttering?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two reports on the agenda plus one real quick. Brian, why don't you start? Sally, if you'll follow Brian, and then I'll wrap things up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Several items with the council approval this evening of the CWG Waterline Hospital Contract. We'll have a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday, March 11th, and then the following Wednesday and the 18th, hate construction will begin, will mobilize and begin construction. So again, that's a 90-day window. We're hopeful they can hit that, with weather and everything, they can hit that timeframe. But we're excited about getting that project moving. Main Street is currently advertising for the position of a Main Street Coordinator, as approved in the budget. It is a 20-hour-per-week position, assisting the Main Street Board on prioritized work program elements. Steering Committee of the Main Street Board will be reviewing applications and resumes over the next two weeks with an anticipated selection the first of April. A Main Street Work Program report is due at the end of this month, and we will also bring that to council in April for a presentation and give you a synopsis of the group's activities for the remainder of 2015. The city, along with other entities in the county, have submitted a letter of support to both the Colorado Economic Development Commission and the El Paso County Economic Development Office, expressing interest in pursuing the redesignation of the El Paso County Enterprise Zone. The mayor, thank you, signed that letter. We sent that on. This will allow all or some portions of Teller County to be included within the El Paso County Enterprise Zone. We will continue to research opportunities and impacts of the enterprise zone for Woodland Park. If the city is deemed eligible to be included in the El Paso County Enterprise Zone... If the city is deemed eligible to be included in the El Paso County Enterprise Zone, we will formulate a formal request and recommendation for city council consideration. Aaron Smith and myself have been chatting about the opportunity and impact potential, and we'll continue to do that and, again, to address council at a future date.
Let me interject very quickly, Brian. You heard Brian say that the mayor signed a letter. The mayor signed a letter not committing the city to anything other than gaining information about enterprise zones. So he, we won't let him sign a letter that commits the entire council. He was just saying, let's work together to get more information so that the council can make an informed decision. Thank you.
And on that note, we have other similar letters of support in the same vein from Victor, Purple Creek County Commissioners, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. So it's a collaborative effort countywide. Woodland Station, the DDA Finance Committee will meet tomorrow to discuss tip options for the Family Entertainment Bowling Facility in Woodland Station. The project had received a preliminary lender bank commitment and is slated for construction startup in August of this year. So we're, that is an ongoing discussion. David had mentioned the interactions of both the architect and NES and engineers relative to Woodland Station. This project hopes to be coming out of the ground this year, and we're working through the final finance options that will be available for this project. And I'll continue to keep council apprised of that progress. Kind of along some of the notes that Councilman Carlson presented this evening, anticipation of the aquatic facility land purchase and in the precursor to future city council consideration. At our last DDA meeting, and I believe there were three council members there and the mayor, and we appreciate your presence, I presented a DDA revenue analysis to the DDA Board outlining projected DDA expenses and revenues through 2033. Expenses included the DDA's ability to service the DDA debt to the city as described within the July 2013 adopted and revised loan IGA. Some council members will require that, will remember that discussion and outcome. As a result of the analysis, the DDA Board approved the DDA sales price to the city of the aquatic facility land sale at $3.75 a square foot, based on the CBRE appraisal, CB Richard Ellis appraisal, if you recall, with $100,000 of that total purchase price in cash to be used to purchase the Vectra parcel and right-of-way, allowing for Saddle Club Drive to continue from center to West Street. And that is the DDA's primary objective with that purchase. The remaining amount of the aquatic land purchase amount will be used to offset the DDA city debt. I will continue to work with the city manager and city attorney on two of three work products, including a real estate contract for the purchase of DDA property for the Aquatic Center, a revised DDA city IGA outlining payment in full of the DDA's debt obligation to the city, including the agreed-upon $36,000 interest payment in 2016. And finally, we will work with Vectra on a real estate contract for a DDA purchase of the Vectra parcel and right-of-way in the amount of $100,000. Of course, all contracts and agreements as required will be presented to city council and DDA for final consideration and approval. Number six, workforce housing initiative. As John mentioned, the recently formed America West received its 501(c)(3) status. It really puts it into warp speed now in terms of what we're doing with several projects in the community, including the steering committee activity of updating the 2006 Housing Needs Assessment. So we're looking forward to moving through that process, and again, we'll continually update council. Finally, I wanted to state that four of us on March 18th will be traveling to Denver to make a presentation, the mayor, city manager, city engineer, and myself, regarding the DOLA Energy Mineral Impact Assistance Grant, $875,000 grant for the fleet maintenance facility. We got nine out of 10 points on our application. Bill prepared a PowerPoint, very nice, great job, we're excited. Both Bill and David will be making the presentation, and the mayor and I will be providing support. I'm sure the mayor will get an opportunity to meet a lot of the DOLA folks and the people that work within the Energy Mineral Impact Assistance world. We're looking forward to that, we're feeling very optimistic, so, you know, root us on on March 18th. What questions can I answer? Thank you.
Brian, thank you.
Yes.
That's exciting.
Sally?
Thank you. Mr. Gerzalo's comments and your earlier discussion is a great segue into the announcement that I'd like to present to you and the public this evening, which is regarding the traffic circulation study that is going to be kicked off March 18th at the Cultural Center. Our consultants, AE Comm, will be leading a public meeting about the traffic circulation in Woodland Park and beginning with the history of what accomplishments have been made for improvements, not only along the highway, but within the city over the last couple of decades. And now it is time to plan and determine where we go from here in order to optimize our existing system and look for potential alternatives. So the public is invited to join us on Wednesday, March 18th, 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. The program will engage the public, will put maps on the table and have everybody come up with their ideas and log those in, then our consultants will take those back and start filtering those ideas through their data and research. And then we will also have a stakeholders committee that will review some of those ideas and priorities, help set the priorities, and then go back to the public in another public meeting about September, October, and have them check and see if they think we're on the right track for an overall plan for the future. So we hope that all of you can join us on the 18th, and we'll keep you abreast of how this progresses through the next eight, 10 months.
Sally, what time is that meeting?
6:00 PM, 6 to 8.
Thank you. Cultural Center?
Cultural Center, yes.
Hopefully you'll be back from Denver.
We will be.
We go on the 17th.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be a long meeting if it were 37 hours later. Quick, two quick, any questions for Sally?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sawyer mentioned the cover of the Park and Rec Guide and the picture of the park, Memorial Park. Today, Bill led the pre-bid conference or the bidders' conference for that project. So construction drawings are done. We had five or so general contractors here. It was a mandatory meeting, so they will now begin working on their process of bidding that construction project. So we're very excited about that step forward.
Dave, would you go ahead and give a timeline for that, just?
Oh, I won't, but Bill will. Bill, sorry?
For construction of it?
Well, based on all the things that are going to go on this summer, how is the construction going to affect?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, Farmers Market, the car show. All of those, Sally's done a wonderful job working with those folks to find alternative venues and places for them. Construction at the park will be significant, and there really won't be any scheduled events at the park all summer long. We hope to be finished with construction by the end of the construction season. We'll have to see how things go, but that's certainly our anticipated completion date is by the end of the fall of this year.
Okay, that's good.
Can we expect bids to be in and award to be done by the end of April? That timeframe?
End of March, I believe. I've got too many projects bidding right now.
Okay.
I think it's the end of March is when the bids are due, and then by the middle of April, we'll be awarding, so, if you bear with me for a moment.
We could smell diesel and dust late spring is the idea. The car show is going to be generally within the neighborhood east of the park. Fourth of July will be at the Cultural Center in the pavilion and Build a Generation. And Main Street are hosting that this year, sponsoring that. And what's the other event? Oh, Farmers Market is going to be at Kavanaugh Field Parking Lot in that area. The arts and crafts component of what we think of as Farmers Market will be in the parking lot area that's surrounding the old Catholic Church.
Memorial Park bids are due on the 31st of March, and then I would anticipate probably that second meeting in April to have a contract before you.
Are any of the bidders from Teller County?
Oh, absolutely. You mean general contractors that were in attendance? Yes, it was a good mix of local and Colorado Springs folks.
And lastly, per the charter, the city manager is responsible to present to the council and the community 60 days after the end of the budget year an annual report. You are getting those delivered to your desktops tonight. If it's not online, it will be, there's several copies in the back. This is a great summary, some great pictures on the front that reflect a lot of the wonderful things that happened in 2014. Many of the people that are in the audience were involved in some of these activities, but it's really a report of the accomplishments that were made during the course of the year. There are quite a few financial numbers. I will point out that those are unaudited numbers. We will be going through the audit in March, and once the audit is complete, that, of course, will become a public document as well. What questions can I answer for you? Yes, sir?
I always ask numbers, questions. On the sales tax figure there, does that include the interest on sales taxes, delinquent penalties and vendor fees and those types of miscellaneous things too?
No, sir, that does not. Those numbers that you mentioned are included in the miscellaneous revenue category, the 3%. That is the $264,670 number that you see, close to, about the 11 o'clock position on the circle.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to comments on written correspondence. They have one today and from the junior Woodland players in thanks to the community investment. They've written a nice letter, Karen Alexander, in stating how thankful they are for community investment, so, thank you very much. That's all I have. There's nothing else, this meeting is now adjourned.
We put little plaques on the historical village buildings.